Call order, the regular State Council meeting for Mondays, September 26th. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where all its saints stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Beeden, if not show that everyone is present except Mayor Palchett, I'll look for a motion. Excuse Mayor Palchett. Councilmember first of all.
I move to excuse Mayor Palchett.
I'll second you.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Moving on to the approval of the minutes for September 12th, 2022. Councilmember Gill.
I'll move in minutes. I'll second.
Your motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approved? Any bills this evening? Approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Your motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Consent agenda? Okay, we're going to open the floor for public comment. Please remember the two-minute limitation for your presentation and please state your name and address for the record. Do we have any anyone for the public comment? And remember that there is also a second comment at the end of the meeting as well.
I'm Philip Monroe. I live at 910 Westbrook. My association might come up here and complain when I told them I'm out to talk to a tree trunk, but I'm going to give it a try. The border directors in our saw both create subdivision to go pay it off nine mile. I'm a arborist too. They asked me to trim up the trees on Essex Drive. There's 14 more ways that are probably 30 years old. So I did for them, plus I helped the city out. So I did all of that for eight hours, save the city some money and help them out because they got issued pollen roads anyways. So I turned that, I called the DPW to make sure they pick up all the branches. Talked to Jeff, yeah, yeah, yeah. We went in there, it looked like the tree that went through there. I got all these pictures. You've got four-foot branches, the whole street's laced. And Jeff is there. I chewed his ass out. You can probably hear it from New Hudson. He can't come back, there's no help over there. Look at this. I'll leave this here. You dug, right?
Yeah.
You know, you need to fix some things here. You know, there's Paul there too. And I called you on this too. Remember, I asked you to go to Grayfield in Westbrook on this? This is a lawn service you guys give us. I left you a message to come over there. And the whole subdivision for years is complaining. Look at this. Do you guys have this around your neighbors? You don't at your house. Look at this. You know? Jeff, Trevor, and weeds. Huh? I take care of my weeds. Weeds is lawn service.
Coin board.
You know? You know, look at this. Nothing gets done. It never gets fixed. Half the crew in the DPW don't give a crap. They don't even admit it. When does this get fixed? By the way, Scott and Sons that's over across the street will cut this under $800, will save you guys $2,300. You guys give us crappy service all the time. And look at, nothing's done. Jeff or anybody. Will you put up with this? You know? I was here last month. Nobody asked Paul or Doug any questions what I offered you guys with them pictures. And meanwhile, nothing really had done. What's wrong with you people? No other town does what you guys do with their city regarding the plight. It's plight. Three parking lots, you know? Think about it. I'll leave this here for Doug.
Anyone else for public comment this evening?
Carl Richards, 396. Good evening, Council. I was going to request an extra minute, but I think I can make it in two. I'll stick to three items. We all lost a wonderful representative of downtown on the 17th of this month. Diane Rouse passed away on the 17th. She's been owning and operating Diane's dollhouse for more than 20 years. And the location where she's at, and the visitation will be the 70th of this week, okay? And the funeral service will be at the funeral home on October 1st. She must have had the right formula because she stayed in business all these years right there in that corner. And the motivation and the passion to capture the people and repeat business, she must have had the perseverance to endure. Because she certainly had a prosperous shot. Her husband, George, George, yeah, he would probably reopen it at some time. Number two, I want to give hats off to the vets club. They do a lot for us. They got me a new cane today. The tip is good. The handle was better than what I had, mine was worn out and I was slipping. There's no place else in this town you could get a cane or some help with some of the things the vets club does. They're just phenomenal. And in case the rest of you haven't heard about it, it's old news now, but they got their sewer problems fixed this past summer.
Mr. Richards, any of you summarize for presentation or save the rest to the other comment at the end of the meeting?
I'm allowed to say. Yeah, I've been lingering on for years and they got it all done this early part of this year. Thank you, vets club. And I wanted you to make sure somebody told you. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I'll look on that.
Judy Keeling, 62180 Arlington Circle, South Line, Michigan. Just for any information, the senior club, the Center for Adults, active adults, has a large medical closet. We have canes, walkers, wheelchairs, and a lot of medical needs for the public who aren't vets or who are vets. We'll get it to them also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Keeling, for that information. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And we'll move on to the discussion of downtown with Nate Mack.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Good evening, City Councilor. As Carl mentioned in his comments, downtown lost a longtime business owner Saturday, September 17th. Diane Rouse of Diane's Dollhouse. Just a little bit of background on Diane. She opened her business in downtown South Line in 1989, which would be 33 years in downtown. And she's been an anchor in the downtown since then. You know, a lot of the comments that I've seen online were that, you know, she provided great joy to countless families in the South Line area. And, you know, being in that type of business, hopefully people are able to do that. And she was able to do that very well based off of the longevity of the business. So again, I want to mention that services for Diane will take place with the visitation this Friday at Philip's Funeral Home and then the funeral on Saturday at the same location. So yeah, moving on from that, the city manager, myself, and two billing officials went through 135 East Lake Street today to determine the completeness of the building investment for the property, which is outlined in the tax debatement agreement. Based on the walkthrough this afternoon and the building officials' comments, the building investment is completed. What's left is, in the building, is leasehold improvements and they have final elevator inspection scheduled for October 6th. And then there are some kitchen inspections that need to happen as well this week. So with that being said, you know, the improvements that were made in the building far exceed what the initial minimum investment of 1.7 million would be. It's almost double that. And so with that being said, based off of that information, which is the reason why we're not bringing it for an additional extension this evening because the work on the building has been completed. And then, of course, Pumpkin Fest was this weekend and by all accounts, it was a great event. I wanted to take a moment and thank the Public Works Department for putting up all the cornstalks in downtown prior to the event. If you were coming through the city at all today or downtown, you might have seen that some of them were taken down by the state. We're going to get those back up this week, but it was just, you know, crossing the wires, with, you know, volunteers cleaning up. And so that's, that'll be taken care of this week. But I also wanted to take a moment to thank Diana Regan, our Farmers Market Manager, for the amount of work that she did putting the market together, trying to fit in as many vendors as possible. If you saw, she went back behind the fence, kind of where we have the shed. And so she fit a few extra back there. But overall, it was a great event, it's a great event for the community and very happy with how things turned out. And then finally, last week, we had the downtown business owner and property meeting at Corner Social. I discussed the current PDA incentives that we have in place. And then after the meeting, I met with the owner of 116 East Lake Street, which is the former line booked then, to kind of go over his plans for what he has for the building and, you know, what we can kind of see in the future moving forward. So with that, I'll have, or I'll happily answer any questions if you want to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Do we have any questions for me this evening? Councilmember Gill.
I just wanted to say, I was, I mentioned it to you when you were there, but I was very impressed with how the farmers market was handled. I know that there was, you know, a lot shorter of an area, but I even liked, I liked the area in the middle too. In fact, I really hope she might consider doing that again because I thought it kind of, you know, forced people to be a little closer to the booths. So I thought it was really great. I appreciate it how, you know, how she did that and how that happened. Thought it was a great event and I always think that farmer market is a great addition to Pumpkin Fest.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hanson?
Well, I love the news about spun sugar coming to downtown. I think that's going to be great. I'm really excited to see that. I know that it's probably going to be a long time coming. Is she trying for like Q2 of next year or?
I don't know. I went, I saw that she said sometime next year. So I'm not sure what that'll be. I don't know what type of work that has to be done in the building. I don't know if they've actually closed on that property yet. And so, yeah, it's going to be a while before they're open, but yeah, they'll be a great addition to downtown.
Any other questions for Mr. Ray? Thank you very much, Nate. Moving on to the fire chief's report. Chief Corrigan.
Good evening, councilmembers. Currently, the fire department has 700 incidents for the year, ranked pacey well over 1,000. My first Pumpkin Fest, I'm pretty impressed. City workers and great child organizers, DPW, police, fire, it was a great, great event. I'm impressed. Even the parade had a great turnout and it was not the best weather. The fire department, I had his fifth instances at the Pumpkin Fest. We had one trip in the fall, which seemed to be pretty much okay. The officers and myself are currently reviewing software, different software products for the fire department. We've used several different areas so far, it's been work in progress. Back in 2016, we had 629 instances and now we're at 1,000. So it's been increased. We want to have better software. We're going to help us tie everything together whether it be your instances, I can receive fires reports, fire expressions, our inventory on the first half. So we're kind of looking in that direction right now. I posted a picture of our ladder truck on social media, it's kind of a timeline. You can kind of see it looks like a trucking out, so it's getting close. Actually has a bucket and a box on it, so that's a plus. And lastly, engine two was out of service for the last five days, or five days ago, four or five days. The tower, light tower on top of the truck was being repaired, is repaired back in service. It's good to go.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for Chief Corrigan? Councilmember Gill.
More just a comment. I always feel good for the guys when they're down, especially in events like Pumpkin Fest. The kids just eat it up and those guys are killing it all, all day long. So that's quite a, quite a nice advertisement.
Yeah, they do. Thank you very much, chief. Appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to the police report with Chief Sobick this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. For town council, good evening. Just, I want to be short and sweet. Just wanted to say thank you and recognize some people. Kathy Swan, the committee of Pumpkin Fest and the volunteers. I've been doing this for like 29 of the 31 years I've been here, so I know what it takes. But actually, I don't really know how much it takes because I know that these guys put in so many hours, especially Kathy, even in the committee. So I'm proud of, I hear the event like Pumpkin Fest that kind of showcases South Line, it's really, really to be recognized and just thank for just countless hours and so really appreciate what they've done this year. To the DPW, Jeff Argina's crew, even though there are a couple guys short now right now, the setup and the breakdown, you never know when we had the big Pumpkin Fest, the festival this past weekend, these guys are jumping on the spot with the signs and the barricades, everything else like that, and putting them up and taking them down. So even though they're shorthand, they're doing a great job. So Jeff and his crew are an awesome job. Recognize Sergeant Fod this year. It's like one of those things where we're trying to divvy it up to every sergeant differently so they can really experience what it's like finding for the South Side of Pumpkin Fest. It's not an easy thing and no one really wants to do it this way, is it? But Fod was chosen this year, did a great job. He met with the DPW, met with the Oakland County Sheriff's Department to kind of prep. We're actually two guys down right now, so two guys being down, two guys is like at Pumpkin Fest is being down with 10 guys because we have to have somebody at every single post. So he did a great job. We made some adjustments on the fly when the parade was going. Thankful for the Oakland County Sheriff's Department who filled in some of the spots for us along the Pontiac Trail route. Our cadet, our crossing drivers, and our administrative assistant was even volunteering this year. Well, not volunteering, anyway. We had some volunteers at businesses along the way that actually stopped. They had to sat in front of a cone so people would not come out of the businesses while the parade was going. So it's a great team effort this year to make it a success, even though the weather was kind of crappy this year was. I was just surprised and amazed at the people at McCandy and Pontiac Trail, which was unbelievable. I mean, all along there. So it just kind of shows you where we go with South Lines, like, you know, the people that come, not only the citizens, but the people that come from all around us, they kind of recognize what Pumpkin Fest is. So, and for the great Oklahoma State Police Department for allowing us to use our golf cart for the Pumpkin Fest and for the security, like to watch the vendors. So great event. Not going to be here next year forward, but thank you all the people that made Pumpkin Fest a great event like a few years, a few years. So that's all I have for it.
Thank you, chief. And you're welcome to come back as a visitor too. Any, any questions for Chief Sobick this evening? Thank you very much, chief. No unfinished business. Let's move on to new business number one, which is repair, resurface all of the apparatus bay floors in the fire station. And Chief, Fire Chief Joey Corrigan. Appears to be one of yours.
Yes, sir. It's in the budget plan for a few years. We had steel bids, we had three bids came back, we had five electric plant measure for station and two steel bids. The low bid was concrete craft at 21,555 and 10 cents. They're going to repair any cracks, any kind of holes in the concrete, polish it down and resurface it. And then they're going to re-strike the backup lines.
Councilmember Hanson?
So out of the three bids that were changed, this was definitely the lowest. Is, I was trying to look through the invoices and whatnot in the packet. Can you maybe give us a, not a deep dive, but just like an explanation for why the range of prices, I guess?
It's, it's more labor intensive than anything else. It's just really the labor cost. If they're grinding down concrete and filling in the materials itself are actually pretty minimal, so it's mostly just labor.
Okay. Councilmember Chris Moore? I'm sorry, are we getting done?
No, I just wanted to say.
Well, yeah, the spread. So like one's 21,5, one's 35.8, one's 45, one's 76, between concrete craft, MSC floors and concrete floor treatment, is it all a labor issue between those prices or?
Yes, the primary cost of each invoice is labor.
Okay.
Councilmember Chris Moore?
Thank you. I'd like to move to approve the low bid to repair and resurface the fire station and Corrigan's bay floors. Maintenance repairs to include being ground down, cracked, cracked still, any damage repaired and polished by concrete craft in the amount of 21,555.10 on account line item 101336972.
House floor. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember McGibb?
I was wondering how long will this tie up the bins or the doors? Excuse me.
Part of the quote was to have it done before winter, flu or before the freezing temperatures. You know, that, that truck is tonight and worst case, we'll put a couple trucks, DPW or somewhere where it's heated. Should be more than a week or so, is what they're telling us. We're going to do two stages, leave half the station at one point where you keep the rescue of one fire engine in the house. We'll do that half and we'll move that engine and rescue to the other side and then the other half. And then we'll put our trucks back in and they'll come back and do the annual spade and work cheese car sets.
Just kind of curious, what's the curing time on that stuff?
You know, it's mostly polished, so I don't believe the curing time is that long.
Any other discussion? City Clerk Beeden, will you please send a roll call vote in on that?
Dill?
Yes.
Anson?
Yes.
Kurt Swell?
Yes.
Lozer?
Yes.
Dibble?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to the purchase of two new solar LED flashing crosswalk beacon signals for installation at two crosswalks. This is going to be directed to DPW. Mr. Doug Corrigan.
Thank you, Mayor Palchett. Good evening, council. As outlined in this year's budget, the city is planning to upgrade two crosswalks with LED flashing systems, as was installed in the fall of last year at Lafayette Street and Livery. The DPW has obtained quotes and would like to order materials to install these at the west side crosswalk on Wall Street and East Lake Street, I'll adjust for the type of that said west maybe in the packet, as well as north crosswalk of Lafayette Street and Livery Street. Everything is included with these crosswalk systems, with the exception of the poles for one of the crosswalks. For the Wall Street installation, devices will be mounted on existing poles. The two poles needed for the Livery Street will total less than $100. This is a budget expensive, can be purchased under line item 202474740 for $19,562.25 for carrier and gable. And I didn't really spell this out, but carrier and gable two we use for the last crosswalk. Also, the lowest bid in this, actually, if you look at all the other most bids, comes from way out west, we will get zero customers for it and we're in debt. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Councilmember Dill?
I could not be happier to make the motion to purchase two solar LED flashing crosswalk beacon systems at the delivery cost of $19,562.25 under account number 202474740. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dill, second by Councilmember Kurt Swell. Any further discussion? City Clerk Beeden, will you please send a roll call vote on that one?
Dibble?
Yes.
Morder?
Yes.
Kurt Swell?
Yes.
Anson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Motion passes. Thanks a lot, Doug. I know everybody's looking forward to them. Moving on to the next item is budget. Do we have anything for the budget this evening? Councilmember Dill? She's on her way.
I just wanted, so I was looking for some of the ARPA fund bids that I was telling you about, all the ones I've seen before expired, so I could get the details on it. So I've been watching for them. The only ones I'm seeing come out are right now are from Detroit again. So I'm just wondering, who is, like, who's the gatekeeper? I know it's like the state, but like, who is, who are we waiting for and?
For us, it's the state of Michigan. So because we're a non-entitlement unit, all of our funds flow through the state of Michigan. So the Department of Treasury.
Treasury, that's it.
Yeah, and so they have a subset group of individuals. Well, there was three, but I heard they're going to do, maybe do some budget cuts in that department. But right now, there's three individuals within the Department of Treasury that are kind of overseeing the ARPA funds.
And are they, is there any new information?
Not that I have seen. The city manager has been working with the department heads to collect information, basically ideas from them on how they would like to utilize the funds. And we're trying to get a report prepared to present to council at a later date on what we'd like to do with the funds, but ask for other individuals. I'm really only, again, like you're saying, Detroit, I'm finding a lot of Flint information, Saginaw, so those larger communities that are receiving direct funds from the federal government, no one in quote-unquote "our" category have I been able to tap into those reports yet.
So could we technically, we could be technically try to do something and just we're afraid that it could be rejected, then we're on the open line?
Correct. And the city manager and I did meet with our auditors when they were in to do the annual financial statements with us last month and discussed that with them. Again, just to also maybe pick their brains with other groups that they audit and what they're doing with the funds. And it sounds like we're in the same boat as a lot of people, hesitant to move forward, wanting to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
Councilmember Gill.
Could you see us developing some scheme to, to end up submitting to them so they could take a look at it and find out whether or not it seems as though it's in the wheelhouse that would be applicable to this, this fund?
I would love to do that. Unfortunately, they don't have a mechanism to do, to perform that. I kind of looked into that as well, as like, okay, could we, you know, type up a summary, get a projected budget together and supply that for someone to review? They are not taking those. And I also received notification this week, or actually last week, that they're looking to slim down that department within the federal government and they're going to be removing a lot of people that review the reports. So the larger entities have to do quarterly reports, the smaller groups such as ourselves, we do annual reports. So I've already actually submitted a report that said that we didn't do anything with the funds so far for last year. Ours are due in April. And so they're looking to basically take that department right now and cut it in half and potentially even eliminate more positions after that. So I'm not sure what kind of feedback I'd be able to get. I did put in some email requests because they have a help desk, looking for some guidance and I haven't, and those were several weeks ago and I haven't gotten any replies back. So I, I feel kind of like we're a little bit like an island. So we have a lot of compliance reporting that we're going to be required to do and they're going to want us to follow, you know, the guidelines set forth in that very large document that they provided, but we're not going to get any feedback along the way.
Still, we have until 2024 to spend it?
Well, we have until 2024 to commit and then 2025 to spend the funds.
It just seems as though we're, we're really running an awful lot of risk by, by taking chances, but they're making it virtually impossible to actually have some efficiencies and a likely satisfactory outcome from this.
It feels that way. I mean, on my end, it really feels that way. I mean, I want to move forward and obviously we want to do good things within the community with those funds, but we don't want to make a misstep either.
I know that state treasury is, is the ones that we're falling under, but ultimately, is there any way to lean on some advice from the feds? I mean, that's where the money's coming from.
Well, and I, and that's who I have been approaching because that's where I was directed, but I can go back to the state of Michigan and also try to see since now there's going to be the less help within the federal government, to see if I could get anything within treasury, within the state to, to give us some guidance.
I mean, this is the kind of stuff that makes people really angry, you know? I mean, it seems, it's just like a demonstration of how ineffective the government can be. And don't get me wrong, because the, obviously the hard, hard sell places are the ones that really probably need the most assistance. Unfortunately, we still, you know, we're not made whole on virtually anything anymore. I mean, at 51 and, I mean, the whole, the whole nine yards, we're the ones that are always clutching at straws. So it just seems like sooner or later, they're going to have to step up and carry their, their responsibility.
Talking to the choir.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Thanks, Patricia. Really appreciate it. Really appreciate it. To open the meeting up for public comment again, just a reminder, reminder for the members on council, public comment is a one-way conversation. Okay? Just a reminder for the people that want to present, it is a one-way conversation. Nobody is going to respond to the questions that are raised directly. It is your opportunity to present to the council. So do I have any people that want to present in the public comment again? Remember the two-minute timeframe and state your name and address for the record if you would.
Harold Jukes, Lady Lennox. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I want to get into the last item I wanted to mention. I could talk for twenty minutes, I imagine, on all the developments that have happened in South Line over the last two or three months here, but I'll limit to what I consider the most important one at this time. We launched a very important business recently, but we gained a new business. I hope it works out, I'm sure it will. Service Iron Works up on the end of Mills Street was sold for four million dollars. And I talked to the son, the CEO of the new company, which is Motor City Power Wash Company. They build and assemble and install power wash machinery for car washes and other types of large power, like power washing situations. Ian is a man's name, and the company will be bringing seventy employees with them from their present location before the end of this year, and they hope to have about a hundred and twenty employees by next year. So that'll be a new improvement, I guess. It was certainly a shame if that facility went downhill and wasn't picked up, but I'm glad somebody picked it up. Where did Service Iron Works go? Absolutely unknown. Too bad we couldn't keep them around. It's another place, but that's like, okay, last thing I just mentioned, I was shocked, sorry to see George Miller's old house go down, but that's like, that's quite a, portion of that house was the original...
Need to summarize your presentation, Mr. Henson, if you would.
Was the original office from eighteen thirty-two, thirty-three, for the original first sawmill on South Line, okay? And that was, that's why Mills Street got named as Mills Street, okay? And part of his house was the original office. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll propose public comment and move on to the managers' report. With city manager Zellman.
Thank you. In upcoming meeting, October tenth, we'll have a presentation regarding the 2021, 2022 audit. I'll be providing a copy of that for review and getting in preparation for that particular meeting. City Hall was closed last Thursday as a crane was brought in to removal of HA C units and repairs to the roof of the building. The building will be closed again at a future date when the crane is bringing in the units back on top of the building. I'll advise everyone of that particular closure. In the upcoming weeks, we also have rerouting of traffic around our building for the entrance of the building when they are pouring and removing concrete and the sidewalks and the entrance to City Hall. In relationship to our road bonds, I met with representatives of MFCI LLC regarding issuance of our bonds for road improvements. We will have a resolution coming for city council sometime in November regarding the authorization of that particular sale. Regarding the road improvements, I met with our engineers from HRC, as well as Doug Varney and Jeff Argy last week to discuss the scope of the road improvements for the upcoming year. I'll update city council, we'll get a firm indication as to the area, areas that we'll be making improvements for the upcoming year. Relating to the information that was brought to city council a few weeks ago regarding investigating some of the ordinance violations and landscaping issues within the city, locations were identified by the ordinance officer and investigated, numerous contacts were made, and the ordinance officer is trying to clean up all the items related to items that are actually located within the city. And DPW will also be addressing the other items that are actually on city properties. And the ARPA funds, as Patricia had mentioned, I had been in contact with some members of the department heads regarding potential uses or potential needs within departments regarding those particular funds and seeing how they will coincide with some of the suggestions that were made by city council members. We'll be investigating those items as it relates to other jurisdictions to see how potentially the city of South Line will be able to use those ARPA funds in the future. We expect we will still have a future meeting on that, but it's all dependent based upon information that we get from the state of Michigan or the federal government. And that's all I had, and I have to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Paul. Any questions for Mr. Zellman? Councilmember Dill?
Thank you. Just to be clear, these in the packet that's online, these new complaints that where you're talking about, the received photos and that the ordinance officer went out to Eleven Mile, Colonial Acres, CVS, some of these other places, all of this whole list, that was all based on the information that Mr. Monroe brought out coming in this call, correct?
The majority of those, not all, although some are other ones that are investigated by the ordinance officer.
The ones that are saying received photos of that was in there, so those are all in there too.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Kurzweil?
Paul, what I would like to do when the budget season comes around is begin to address some of the issues that Mr. Monroe has been bringing to council's attention. I think they're valid. You know, I'm not saying that they're insignificant, but I think they're valid in terms of the overall look that we have for the city. I think our plantings were very miniscule or on our signs this year, lack of volunteers. I get it that we have a very tight workforce. I understand that. We don't have a lot of extra employees available, and as the city becomes more active with events, DPW becomes more focused sometimes on managing the events than it does managing maybe other issues. And I, and I think that the guys over the gentlemen over at DPW are in a very tough position. I just don't think all the resources are there, quite frankly, Phil. I don't think anybody's, I really don't. I know these guys, I know a lot of them personally, and there's a reason why I do Paul Baker Park. I'm the one that does Paul Baker Park, because it isn't the staffing to send somebody down there at the wages they're making, including pensions, you know, insurance, whatever, to go down there a couple of weeks. I mean, that's a job for an independent contractor. So I would like to see the city, me and you and Doug, possibly in the budget season, put in the budget monies for independent contractors that can come in and take some of that summer load off of the DPW workers, because it's clear, this has been going on for a while, and the problem is not getting solved. So I think that we can address that issue, Phil, in the budget season, and I would hope that the city manager would be receptive to that and Doug would be receptive, but I will tell you, these are the hardest working guys. These guys, when they're working on events, their busy season is starting now. I mean, they are going to have Ladies' Night, they're going to have Cool U, they're going to have Christmas, they're going to have the New Years, whatever's going on in downtown during the fall, they're ragged. And then, and then we turn around and move into the winter season where they're working two, three o'clock in the morning, plumb streets. So it's a tough department to be in, but hopefully we can dress shoes and everything and resolve it. But I want to thank all individuals that come before city council with issues, because we're here to solve the problems.
Any other discussion for the city manager? Councilmember Kibben?
Paul, if you enlighten me, how will that mesh with their contract, the DPW's contract to be outsourcing that activity?
Some of that, some will have to be discussed with the union, but the potential is as higher, you know, some potential part-time people, Jeff and I have already had discussions regarding that. There's certain things to supplement the workforce, but there are certain limitations within the contract that we will have to address or they'll have to negotiate with the union.
Councilmember Hanson?
To kind of build upon what Maggie was discussing, one of the things that actually was brought up last week was regarding the extension cords and that sort of thing. I think that that would be a great item to put in back of our mind, two budget for for next year, possibly getting, you know, the estimated cost to get that converted over to outlets and hard lines so that we can have the lights actually connected that way. That would be a great budget item to discuss, at least have an idea how much the cost would be, especially to turn that book around. The, yeah, please, I wanted to say that. Thank you.
Just for the benefit of the other council members, I've had that discussion with Paul regarding contracting the landscaping requirements for the city previously. That includes the gardens at the historic village, as well as the entrance signs and so forth, and also the landscaping here at the city and school administration building. So that ball is already rolling, hopefully we can actually make that come to fruition in the next year's budget meeting. So certainly appreciate your insight on that, Paul, and I don't know what it's going to take to make that happen, but it definitely would alleviate some of the workload for the DPW and actually put some people doing the jobs and do it for a living as well. Any other comments for the city manager? Councilmember Kurzweil?
Yeah, I've also spoken to Paul, I think, in the past. I also had an opportunity to take a look at the union contracts, and there may be a couple of tiny issues in there, but it didn't seem to be real glaring at all, because this is just basic maintenance, in which generally, really, it's not falling in the responsibilities as a union employee. So the fault's kind of, besides it's seasonal work, and you don't even need anybody part-time, it's probably somebody just coming in, you know, twice, twice a month doing something, you know? So I think that the cost is minimal.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah, I'd like to build on that too, especially when, you know, I'm hearing that mowing a small section of land in a neighborhood would save the city, you know, instead of twenty-three-hundred dollars cost to eight-hundred dollars cost to have a contractor in that neighborhood do a small mow. I mean, that would definitely be something to explore, especially if it's not going to, you know, upset the union if they got too much work as it is, so.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. Moving on to council comments. Councilmember Kurzweil, why don't you start us off this evening?
Actually, I don't have any comments, but thank you very much.
Yeah. Councilmember Hanson?
I attended Pumpkin Fest this most recent Saturday. It was a great event, well-attended. I wanted to at least thank all the volunteers, all the sponsors, all the hard work. There have been a few derogatory comments about some of the things that have evented done and whatnot, but I would have to say that that is well the minority versus the majority. I would say they need detractors as far as Pumpkin Fest and the event itself, if you think that something needs to be changed or added. There are many volunteer opportunities, and I'm sure that the Pumpkin Fest committee would appreciate any assistance and help in putting the fest on next year. One event that is coming up in a couple of weeks is actually a German Fest fundraiser. This is actually through the Brighton Area Chamber of Commerce. It will be on October seventeenth from five to eight p.m. This is a event that is trying to raise money for scholarships for kids for school, so there is a forty-dollar per ticket cost, and they are also seeking business sponsors as well to raise money for these scholarships. So hope to see a lot of folks there and hope to raise a lot of good scholarship money for kids, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Dill?
Thank you. I'm sure everyone talked about Pumpkin Fest, but just as a member of the committee, probably the least hardworking of the committee, because I just have to take notes, I just want to say, I want to say thank you to the Pumpkin Fest committee and so much work and sitting on the committee this year. I really saw just how much goes into it and how it is a year-old process to bring this thing around, and I would like to offer that out as well to, you know, we meet all year round. If people don't like what's happening, please come and help us. I wanted to thank Congresswoman Slatten for coming all the way out and judging the pie eating and pie baking contest. It was really great of her to come out, it was fun to see her, and also representative, state representative Kelly Green was out giving out some awards as well. Thank the police and fire, always great to see you guys out there, and just all of the volunteers. You could not run that ticket booth without those millions of volunteers. It is just a fast-paced chaos environment sometimes. And just thank everybody who came to the parade, who walked in the parade, and who came to the festival. It was downpour at some point, and still people were out having fun, so it was really great to see. I just, I wanted to, I wanted some condolences toward Diane, from Diane's house also. When we first moved here, my kid's grandfather came, took a walk into town, and he came home and he was so excited because he hates electronics, and he said, "Did you know that there is a building down there full of toys that have no batteries?" And he said, "Is this the greatest place?" You know, he bought a bunch of puzzles and brought them home for my kids, and they took my kids down there when they were like four years old or three years old, I think. So it was very sad to see, and I just wanted to say how much I appreciated Diane and how she treated my kids over the years. And the last thing I wanted to, oh, two more things, real quick, for our neighbors in Lyon Township, anybody talking to their friends or just wants to get involved, they are really working hard to get themselves a new library. It looks beautiful, the plans are gorgeous, you know, encourage people to consider that and to help out with some of their fundraising, that would be great. And the last thing is Lisa Hamami got on the list of Crane's super lawyers again, so I just wanted to say congratulations. We're so lucky to have a super lawyer. That's all for you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Councilmember Locher?
Thank you, Mayor Porton. I too wanted to thank the Pumpkin Fest board, Kathy Swan, Troy Powell, Lisa Dell, Shelley Olbera, Randy Pironice, they're on the board of directors. Then we have a number of people that were on chairs of the committees, there's Chuck Plager, Jess Bries, Randy and Holly Schilling, Lisa Polby and Polka, I'm sorry, and Marie Seider, Lauren Caldwell, Sherry White, Phil Whiteford, who's there every year cleaning up that mess. My hands off to Phil for that. Chris Plot for being a police liaison this year. He was at almost all meetings and he was very, very helpful when we had some issues And everybody at DPW, they did a great job setting up, tearing down, cleaning up. It really is a thankless job for those guys, and their business is all year. Those guys don't stop. Police and fire, water and sewer, y'all did a great job, and thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Locher? Hope this is very gratifying. Councilmember Kibben?
Just more of the same, actually. The, my understanding was this parade had the most people that had walked in the parade of any of the thirty, however many.
Seventy-nine.
Yeah, so that's quite a, quite a big feat, and I thought that the morphing a little bit away from, I thought it was a smart idea to end up making something that could be satisfying with less risk than, you know, the beer tents and some of that kind of thing that is always a good crowd pleaser, but if something goes south, you have bad weather and things of that nature, you could end up really getting in a bad place. So, and to say nothing of the fact, you need substantially more people to step up and volunteer, be able to man all the things that are necessary to be compliant with state laws and things of that nature. So I was, I thought that was a brilliant idea to focus how it actually turned out down there. It was manageable, it was, it involved substantially more of just the residents that lived in the area, having their grandmas seeing them, watching, walking in the parade and things while they're in the crowd is always a real delight, so it just gave it a little bit more personal touch there, I thought, so. So I'm hoping, I look forward to us being able to... So I'm hoping, I look forward to us being able to have people make suggestions that might end up being very workable, if they can enhance the thing and it doesn't put us in jeopardy, but in the meantime, I thought that that was a great, great, great event. That's it.
Thank you, councilmember Kibble. My comments this evening, I also want to pass along my condolences to the family of Diane Rouse, the owner of Bagans' House, who passed away in September seventeenth. Diane was an ardent proponent and supporter of South Line, and she will be dearly missed. I certainly wish her husband, George, and the rest of the family comfort during this very difficult time. On a slightly brighter note, though, I want to congratulate the South Line High School varsity equestrian team for finishing in first place in the Division A finals, and wish them the best of luck as they move on to the regionals taking place this weekend at the Chiawase County Fairgrounds. And finally, we have a festival this weekend, I think it's Pumpkin Fest or something. I want to congratulate the Pumpkin Fest committee for another great Pumpkin Fest, and for not letting the weather dampen their spirits. I was a member there, just helping out with a few odds and ends, and I'll tell you, it really helped drive home how much work is involved in pulling that thing together, I mean, it's immense. It takes a lot of people, it takes a lot of coordination, and so if, like everybody has said here already tonight, if anybody's available, they will welcome you with open arms, so it was a great event, and based on the crowds and everything, it was a home run, so all the best to the Pumpkin Fest committee. That's all I have for this evening, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Kurzweil.
Move to adjourn.
Have a nice evening, folks.